Good evening. I'd like to welcome you to this Joint Planning Commission City Council meeting. We're here tonight to discuss our, the information that we had looked at during our last joint meeting concerning our draft land use development plan and preview of zoning. And with that, I turn it over to you, Mr. Stevens.
Yeah, we'll actually, we'll have Denise call the role real quick.
Oh, thank you.
Good evening, everyone. Can you hear me?
You can.
Okay, good. Mayor Ashley Smith? Mayor Pro-Tim Hamrick?
Here.
Councilmember Dennehy?
Here.
Councilmember Gonzalez? Councilmember Hockes? Councilmember Meisner?
Here.
Councilmember Brandon Smith?
Here.
Chairman Maloney? Planning Commissioner Clark?
Here.
Commissioner Clement?
Here.
Commissioner Ladue? Commissioner Moss? Commissioner Suther?
Here.
Commissioner Randy Smith?
I'm here.
And Denise, I do, I do see Commissioner Ladue is on the Zoom meeting.
Okay. Is that the one I heard beep in? Okay. Did I miss anybody else? Do I have everybody?
Do you have Gary Clark?
Commissioner Clark, did I not call your name?
Yes, you did. I just didn't know if you'd heard me.
Okay, I did. I gotcha.
Thank you.
Thank you. Have a good evening.
Thank you, Denise.
I'll turn it over to Patrick to introduce tonight's presentation. So, good evening, council members and members of the Planning Commission. As you will recall, two weeks ago, we had an opening round of discussions about the future land use plan and a set of alignment maps between the future land use plan and what our current land uses are in the city. And after some discussion and a meeting that went a couple of hours, we decided what we would do is get you better quality maps, a bit more information, and then resume this discussion this evening. Here with us from Howseal Levine, we have Josh Kuntz, we have Jackie Wells, and we have John Howseal. And they're going to sort of recap the conversation or the points that they made in their presentation a couple of weeks ago, and then we can again resume this conversation. So Josh, I don't know if you want to start first?
Sure, yeah. Thank you, Patrick, and thank you to the council and Mayor and Mayor Pro-Tim for having us. Really appreciate being here tonight. We don't have a formal presentation tonight so much as just availability to follow up on any questions that you may have. And I'm able to share my screen if you like to look at the future land use map, which I think you also have in front of you. And we also have the revised alignment maps. And I think overall, the goal is just to show, the goal of the alignment maps is to show where the land use map aligns with your current zoning and where there may be additional zoning tools that may be needed to better implement the future land use, or the land use plan going forward.
Do we have, is there any other, so that's where we are right now?
That is where we are right now. And I, one thing that I would like to point out, and I don't know that we successfully made this point two weeks ago, the future land use map is not an enactment of zoning. There is nothing regulatory about it, per se. What it is doing is establishing a goal for future land use and in particular, future land use decisions as they come before the city. And towards that end, what the alignment map is showing is those areas where current land uses have an inconsistency with what the future land use plan is suggesting go there. But we are not creating legal nonconformities because there is no zoning that's being enacted. The owners of those properties are free to enjoy their use and enjoyment of the property under the rules that they have with the current zoning that's there in perpetuity if they want. All we're saying is that if an opportunity in the future comes up to reexamine the land use in those locations, we will have a tool to guide us. And as I, as I believe I mentioned at the last meeting, we do have one of our criteria for the evaluation of rezoning requests is consistency with the master plan.
Thank you for that. Do we have any questions from comments from, yes, Jim?
So, I understand what you're saying, but as we progress through this, are you not going to do some zoning changes as a result of the proposed land use map?
We are not proposing to do any zone changes as a result of adopting the, the future land use plan. Any zone changes that come along will be initiated by the property owners at the time they decide they want to do this. So this would be very similar to what we did with the Riverfront Zoning Master, or Riverfront Zoning Districts. We created the zoning, we created, you know, where we'd like to see that zoning on the maps, but we didn't enact or remap the zoning. We, we created it as a tool for future development. I, I think, you know, one of the great examples within the maps that you have here is, is this idea of neighborhood commercial. So the, the parking requirements and some of the zoning requirements for neighborhood commercial are more favorable for some of these properties, especially on Main Street between 9th and 15th, where, you know, redevelopment of those lots or those properties could be encouraged through rezoning to this neighborhood commercial type of zoning. Right now, they're general, general commercial, and they can stay that way as long as they want. But if somebody wanted to redevelop it and they needed more favorable parking requirements, they could choose to rezone to this neighborhood commercial type of zoning.
So...
Yeah, I think, I think it might be helpful if, if we, if the council would, would like, we could walk through the maps again and sort of touch on some of the high points, take a look at the revised alignment maps and try, and, and walk through them step by step if that works.
Well, thank you for that, Josh. Let's hold, hold on to that thought. We may, we may come back to that, but Jim has some further comments, and let's, let's hear those first.
So, relative to your statement there, don't, don't you have to, I mean, the land use map is not a zoning map, but you're coming back and telling us that it equates to zoning?
No, it does not equate to zoning. It equates to a goal to examine future land use or zoning changes as they come before the city. All this is doing is advising us that, okay, in our box of tools, if someone, as Ryan mentioned, on Main Street between 9th and, and 15th Street decides they'd like to redevelop their property and they'd like to take advantage of potentially lower parking requirements, they can then come before the city and request a rezoning. That would go through the public hearing process, it would go to Planning Commission and Council, Council would have to adopt it by ordinance, none of our procedures would change in that area. All we're saying is, we're not forcing the zoning on anyone.
So, given that concept, if I, if I wanted to do the same scenario on North 19th Street, could I do that?
Certainly. And anywhere in the city where there is a misalign, where the, where the future land use plan and the alignment map show that there is an inconsistency with the existing pattern of land uses, anyone in the future who's in that inconsistency, anyone who isn't in that inconsistency and wants to potentially rezone, the master plan would be one of the guides that we have to answering those rezoning questions when they come before us.
So, five years from now, I come to you and I say, because I'm on North, I, I can't read this map because of this coding that they used, must be a secret.
Jim, would you tell us which map you're on, please?
I'm just happen to be using the, the alignment with current zoning, new districts needed. Somebody had to figure out how to, how to actually spell out those streets instead of using X's. But anyways, so in five years, I come to you and I, and I'm on North Cottonwood, and I want to change to neighborhood commercial. What are my options there from a zoning perspective? Is my question making sense?
Yeah, Patrick, do I want to take a shot at answering this? I think I might be able to clarify it a little bit.
Sure.
All right, so the, there's a comprehensive plan, and then there's the zoning ordinance, and they're two distinct things. Planning comes first, and then zoning sort of follows along and regulates what, how you can use the property and how property can be developed. The best way to think of a comprehensive plan, including the land use plan, is that it is a foundation for decision-making. That if five years from now, a property owner or developer comes in and requests a plan development approval, requests a rezoning, requests a new project, City Council and Plan Commission will be able to look at the comprehensive plan and say, what is the comprehensive plan, which is a reflection of the community's aspirations? What would we like to see in this area? What we'd like to see neighborhood commercial? While the zoning request at this time, let's say it's five years from now, is for heavy industrial, the City Council could then say, heavy industrial in this area to rezone to that is not, not consistent with our recommendations in the plan and the aspirations of this community for this area to be neighborhood commercial. It's not consistent with where and how we would like this area of our community to develop. The comprehensive plan is not regulatory, it does not dictate what has to be on that piece of property. It is a long-range plan to help inform decision-making so that when a property owner or a business or developer comes forward with a request for rezoning or a request for a proposal, you can then use as a reference the comprehensive plan, its land use plan, its goals, its objectives, to see and inform the decision as to whether or not you should approve, amend, or deny a rezoning or development request in the future. One is aspirational, it is guidance, it informs decision-making, it is not dictatorial. The other one is regulatory, it is law, it dictates what you can and cannot do with a piece of property. That being said, zoning is not set in stone. And if someone comes forward with an idea for a development that the plan does not anticipate, and the property owner makes their case, zoning can be changed. That's why you had procedures for plan developments, special uses, variances, and rezoning applications, because nothing is set in stone. So the plan is meant to inform decision-making, the zoning is meant to regulate what can, a property can be used for and how it can be developed. Both can be amended over time. That's the best way I can describe it.
I don't disagree with you. But the fundamental concept is, is the first step of that zoning, when I go in and ask, can I get this zoning for this particular area, if in fact, that my zoning request is in conflict with the plan, the response from staff most likely will be, no, you can't do that. And then the onus is on me to justify my change. So to tell me that the plan doesn't impact zoning, I think, is misleading.
No, I, I wouldn't say that it doesn't impact zoning, it informs decision-making. It's not, it doesn't dictate the outcome. So if I propose something that's counter to the plan, again, things may change in 10 years that we can't anticipate now. And if a petitioner can make their case, rezoning can take place, even if it's inconsistent with the plan, if at the time the request is made, it makes sense to the city. And maybe it furthers a housing need, maybe it furthers an incubator space, it has to extend into an area we didn't think it would have to extend into. So it may meet several other goals of the comprehensive plan, it may not be exactly in keeping what the land use plan portion says, but it may help facilitate and capture several other comprehensive plan goals. So collectively, the comprehensive plan informs decision-making, doesn't dictate the outcome. It's at the time it's adopted, the city's best articulation of its vision for the future. So it informs decision-making on zoning, doesn't dictate it. Does it influence it? Yes, to the fact that it's taken into consideration.
Heavily influences it.
Well, it, it does influence it. I mean, it certainly informs the context of the decision. But again, these are legislative actions, which means council ultimately can do what council wants to do. And if they, if the person requesting the rezoning has made a good case, you can set aside the recommendations of the comprehensive plan in favor of what the, the applicant is seeking.
But by, by its very nature, the Enabling Act legislation at the state level, and every state is like this, the comprehensive plan is intended to very much influence zoning and land use. And by that, I mean, if you've got an area designated for single-family residential, and someone comes in and wants to big, put in an industrial use in that area, the city can say, we don't want in, industry there. We like industry, we'd rather see it over here where the plan provides for it. We don't like it in the area you're proposing. That's supposed to be for residential growth, low-impact residential growth. That person can still apply, they will likely get denied, but the plan very much influences those zoning decisions. Doesn't dictate the outcome, but the intent of the comprehensive plan is to not, is to help guide growth in a way that is advantageous to the city and the character of the city while accommodating investment, private property growth and development, but in a way that makes sense. So by its very nature and design, and in fact, its intent legislatively, a comprehensive plan is supposed to influence zoning. That's the whole point.
Go ahead, Brad.
No, so I think, I think what Councilman Meisner is struggling with is the, the fact that we've, as council, we've made the approach to be more business-friendly, and the overall concept of this gives staff the ability to say no, where we would rather them say yes. Is that where you're?
Well, I, I, we just have to be really careful with long-term land use plans because while we're not doing it, we are in fact dictating what we want to do with those areas just of use, as you said. That in 10 years, John Doe comes up here and wants to do something that's in conflict with the plan, staff by all rights could say, eh, that conflicts with our plan, so you need to sit down and justify it. And that's the reality of what would happen in 10 years. And I don't disagree that that's wrong, but it happens because we established a plan of trying to see in the future of what we think should go where.
To be fair...
Yeah, and that's why the comprehensive plan states at the beginning, it's not set in stone, it's a living document, it's dynamic, and some states require, actually require, that comprehensive plans get revisited, not completely overall, but revisited every five years to make sure that it is still correct.
Right.
Most comprehensive plans, while they're written for a 20-year horizon, are typically redone every 10 years, just for that reason. You can only project so far out. So you project out the best you can, and then you use that as a guide appropriately as time moves on, allowing some things to deviate where you think it's in the best interest of the city, and every five or 10 years, revisiting it to see if it needs recalibration. You're exactly right.
To be fair, even now, when it comes to rezonings, an applicant still needs to make their case for why the rezoning from what they have to what they want is justified. And that still comes before Planning Commission and Council. Planning Commission still acts as the advisory body to determine whether or not it's worth going forward or whether they should recommend favorably on the, the zone change, and then ultimately, it becomes a legislative decision of council.
If nobody's got a question.
Jim, go ahead.
So, I asked this question and apparently used some inappropriate terms, but, and, and I'm looking at the map that says alignment with current zoning, new districts needed. Hypothetically, I'm assuming that at some point, somebody would make some new zoning, right?
That's coming next. You will be seeing that hopefully March 10.
I thought you just said we weren't going to do that.
What do you mean?
That we're not...
So, so what, what we're saying is that we're not going to redo the map with new zoning. We, so we're not...
You're going to give us new tools?
Yes. We're going to create new tools.
Okay.
Just, just like the Riverfront Zoning language.
You threw me a slider there, buddy. All right, so, looking at this map that says new districts needed, in the future, when we created those new districts, whatever they are, well, we don't create the districts, we create the tools. Here's my question, I think. When you look at this map, how many properties on this map are potentially non-conforming, at least relative to the land use, the new land use plan? Is that what that's telling us? That those properties are not conforming to the land use plan, right?
That's true. They are inconsistent with the future land use plan.
How many of those are there?
I haven't counted them. I would estimate that there's probably a couple of dozen.
Yeah.
So...
Yeah, nonconformity and legal nonconformity is a legal zoning term. So I would say, if something is inconsistent with the land use plan, I've done over 200 comp plans personally across the US, you'll never find a land use plan that's 100% consistent with what's on the ground. You can get some that are very, very close, but you'll never get one that's 100% consistent. But it has no legal impact like a legal nonconforming status does for zoning, which is why we're not changing any zoning proactively for any parcels in Kane City.
So when I look at that map and I see, I think, three colors, I see pink, I see blue, and I see whatever that other color is. What does that mean? What are you telling me that, that, you explain it to me. I mean, what are those three colors telling me when I look at that map?
Everything that is sort of that sand beige color means that the use that's there is either consistent...
Right.
...with the master plan or with the future land use plan, or we already have a zone district if it's proposed to be changed, that we don't need to create new, a new zone district text.
Got it.
Okay? Everything that you see in that sort of pink salmon color, that is intended to be in the future designated as a neighborhood commercial area. And you will be seeing soon what the text of the neighborhood commercial district is actually written to include. Everything that you see in blue is intended to be a future office park use. Now, we are not rezoning them. Whatever zoning is on the land there, if the property owner is happy with it, if they're enjoying the use of the property that they've got with the existing zoning that they've got, they can continue that in perpetuity, and there is absolutely no conflict.
Right. But aren't you missing a color? I mean, you talked about the sandy color, which I assume was the whole map.
Oh, okay.
But, and we have, we have a color, other land use plan categories that do not align.
You've got three, you've got three maps when it comes to the alignments. The first one is the synthesis of the other two, okay? So you've got a zoning map...
Yeah, but don't confuse the maps for now, please. Just explain what that dark color is on there. I mean, you've explained what the other two are, but this one says it's other land use categories that do not align. What does that mean?
Okay, so you've got, the, the first map shows the, those areas for which there is a zoning inconsistency or a use inconsistency compared to the, the future land use plan. Okay? The second map is showing you those area, and it includes the three colors, the dark gray, the blue, and the pink. The blue and the pink are the two new districts that the zone, the text of the zoning will be including. The dark gray shows those areas that are inconsistent under the future land use plan, but for which we do in fact have a zone district that is able to accommodate what the future land use is recommending. And then the next map breaks down what the gray areas are in fact revealing.
Counsel, if I could share, we, we did revise these maps, they show the exact same thing, but we revised them in a way that I think shows a little bit more clearly and might tackle some of these questions. If I could share my screen, I could...
Please do. Yeah, I'll give you another map. That's all I need. This should be, this should be one we have. Huh? He said it's new. This, the, we've got the new ones. I ain't got that.
Are you, are you all able to see my screen?
Yes.
We can.
Okay, so, this is the same as the first map in your, in your packet of three maps there. But what we did is we took all of the land use and zoning incompatible areas, and we made them all red. Because for the purposes of this map, we don't need to be, we, we aren't concerned where future land uses are, but we are showing where just every single parcel in the city where there may be some land use and zoning incompatibility. Future land use designations that don't align with your current zoning district classifications. So again, rezoning's not proposed here, and the anticipation is that with your new UDO or UDC Unified Development Code, the update should provide that additional flexibility like we're talking about to implement the desired future land uses on these parcels.
You would look at that map first and then come back and look at this map for more detail.
Yes.
Or should have that...
I'm gonna, yeah, I'm gonna show you revised versions of the next two also, if I could. So again, no parcels or, or anything has changed here, we've just reduced all the different colors to red. These are just the spots in the city where there may be some land, future land use and zoning incompatibility. Then if we go to map two, so, so in, in map one, again, this is all the parcels, map two, these are future land uses, and here we are showing the colors, exist estate residential, single-family residential, mixed residential, et cetera. These future land uses correspond to our memo and our land use designations that we outlined in that memo. So in these parcels, there again is land use and zoning incompatibility, but within your current zoning code, you have zoning district classifications that can be applied to these future land uses. So if a petitioner came in, for example, on this property, and they wanted to develop, and they said they wanted to change the zoning to a zoning classification that would meet the requirements of mixed residential, you have that tool in your zoning code today. No changes need to be made. Again, no zoning needs to be changed immediately, but if the, if the petitioner comes forward, the tool is already in the zoning code. No new districts or texts is need, are needed to change your existing zoning code document.
So I guess, an easy way to put it is the use can remain, the zoning can change from what's there now to a zoning that would accommodate the use that's there, or the land use that's proposed, and you wouldn't have to create a new district. It currently exists in your zoning ordinance.
But the properties that are on this sheet and identified with those different colors are also annotated or designated on that red map?
Yes.
Exactly. This is a subset, a subset of the red, red map.
Okay, got it.
Okay. And then this is a different subset of the red map. This is the map that you were just looking at. I think what was causing a little bit of the confusion is those darker gray blobs, which was showing the remainder of the red parcels on the same map. We took those off, they're not needed for this map. These are a subset of the parcels where new zoning districts would be needed for that petitioner to come in and develop a neighborhood commercial development or a business park development to implement the future land use. So your current zoning code does not have... So, your current zoning code does not have a good zoning district to implement a neighborhood commercial style of development, and it does not have a good zoning district to implement a business park style of development. So, rather than proposing that these parcels be rezoned, or, or, or anything like that, what, what this map is indicating is that here is where the UDO should be, or the UDC should be updated with some flexible zoning districts, so that when a petitioner comes forward, instead of being restricted, for example, to just industrial zoning over here, or whatever the zoning currently is, they can come forward and they can say, I want to develop a, an office campus or a tech warehouse. It doesn't, it's not going to look like an industrial gravel processing plant or anything like that. It's going to be a clean tech warehouse. What zoning category do I need to rezone to do that? And what we're suggesting is that there needs to be a new, on these future land uses, there should be zoning districts that could accommodate these things in your zoning code.
The, anyone else have a comment or question? The, I would like to, to say something here. You know, I was talking with a citizen earlier today, and they were expressing to me their, you know, they're basically born in Canyon City and lived here their entire lives. And they were saying, you know, I really don't want anything to change. I want things to stay just like they are, no changes, let's just keep it the way we are, and we'll all be happy. Unfortunately, people have families, they, you have kids, kids want to live somewhere, and if they were to choose to live in this community, it means that there's got to be growth. And if we want to do well as a community, you know, we really have to grow. And so, it's, it's kind of the other side of the coin, Jim, to what, what you're talking about. Your concern about having staff be perhaps too much of a valve, when people have suggestions or ideas of what they can do with a particular piece of property. Keep in mind that, that we do get, council and planning commission do get to review staff decisions about zoning and planning and uses of property. The, the other side of that coin is kind of the, keep it the same, you know, don't, don't do anything that's going to change things. Because, because we know it's going to change, and because of that, we, we've got to try to look for, that's, that's our job as leaders, is to look forward, to see where we can, to try and set things up for success in the future. You know, the, it is a concern that, 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 you know, too much process or too much bureaucracy can stifle ideas. But on the other hand, if you don't have that, then there's no way the city can defend against bad ideas.
Right, I understand.
And, and so it's, you know, it's, it's the horns of a dilemma, for sure, and we all have to answer it for ourselves, of what we think are the appropriate balances to strike here. And, and that's what we're trying to do, and that's what we're trying to understand. You know, our representatives here from Haciel Levine, you know, I would like to say I do appreciate the work that you've put in on this, and, you know, I'm not, I'm not a, an active enough land planner, or, you know, have that much land planning in my history to understand some of the finer points that you're really telling us here. I do appreciate it. Any other comments?
I was going to say, if I can just piggyback on, on one thing that you said about change, and I really respect that, and we're not forcing change on anybody, we're trying to accommodate change when it's requested, in a manner that's consistent with the character of Canyon City. And that is a big distinction. We're not forcing a rezoning on anybody, we're not rezoning anybody's property, we're not forcing anybody to change, but we want to accommodate change. When we talked with business owners, and people who are, you know, entrepreneurs, they said, boy, we should really try to figure out how to attract tech businesses, tech industry, incubator space, IT. You don't, you know, and create that kind of an IT research park. You don't have a zoning district right now to accommodate that. That's change I think everybody would like to see. So in order to accommodate that change to the community's advantage, we have to create a zoning district to accommodate that request, should it come to the city. Because right now, the best they could rezone to is industrial, and that's not going to win the game. So, we're not forcing change on anybody, I think, to your point, is a very good point about change, but we're trying to accommodate change when requested, that fits the character of the community.
Thank you.
So towards that end, we are asking for a consensus from Planning Commission and Council regarding, in particular, the future land use map, and the land use, the future land use for the annexation priority areas.
Jim?
Final, and then I'll shut up. So, I appreciate all the work that everybody's done in terms of establishing this land use. I, I mean, that's why we brought you in here, is to use your professionalism to give us some guidance, and I appreciate that. And I'm not questioning that, I just, because we're talking about a five, 10-year plan, I want to make sure that I understand what, what I'm kind of voting on. The other thing is, John had mentioned a zoning, but don't, zoning appeals do not come to council by the appellate process, correct? Don't those go to the adjustment board?
Well, these aren't zoning appeals, these would be zoning, yeah, rezoning requests.
A zoning appeal, though. If you had a zoning appeal, where's that go? I'm digressing, but...
Typically, if you have a zoning appeal, it's going to be for something like a particular kind of use under the existing zone district. And yes, those would go to Board of Adjustment.
Right.
Here, what we're talking about is a completely different kind of use, that someone may want to adjust their current zoning to allow.
But my point is, it ultimately doesn't come back to council. This is our shot here.
Yes.
If there's a zoning issue, that zoning appeal does not come to council. For us to override, it goes to...
An appeal does not, but a rezoning or a zoning application does, yes.
If it ever gets...
A development, a rezoning, a zoning application, those would all come back to council. But we won't, we're not changing the procedure through which an appeal would take place.
Right. We did that.
Yeah, we did that six months ago.
Right.
Okay, I'm good. Good. Any other, any other questions from, yes, please?
I think that with the, having the master plan really helps out in the, in the future when you take a look, for instance, with the business parks. If we identify some areas where we want to have some development like that, it, it, a lot of infrastructure is going to need to be invested, and it targets your spending because you just have a limited amount of dollars, and you want to spend them the most effectively that you can. And it just helps out. With all the policymaking, then you can make your, your infrastructure improvements in those areas.
So, the, generally, in the, in the past, as we've done this, we've just gone down the line with a thumbs up or thumbs down.
Sure.
And so, Tim, why don't you start us off?
Give us a big thumb. I mean, mine were just questions, you know...
Yeah, no, I mean...
So thumbs up for me? Yeah, thumbs up for me, absolutely. So that's, that's...
Even though that's not a decision.
Would the people online care to weigh in?
Can we get, from the Planning Commission members and city council members who are online, can we get a thumbs up or thumbs down from, from you folks as well?
A verbal one, please.
This is Jerry Maloney, I give it a thumbs up. Thank you.
This is Gary Clark, and I give it a thumbs up.
Randy Smith here. Thumbs up, please.
I see Brian Ledoux is on. Brian, you're on mute.
He was having issues.
Maybe in the chat.
Brian, perhaps you can shoot us a chat message.
And just while we're waiting for that, Councilman Meisner. Councilman Meisner, just to your point, yeah, no, it's not a decision, but the thumbs up makes sure that we know that we're going in the right direction, and we appreciate that. Thank you.
I don't know how you do that without a decision, but you're okay.
Well, the decision's in June, right?
Huh?
The decision's in June, and we approve it all.
Right. This is, this is to make sure we're just headed in the right direction.
Yes.
To make a decision, right?
To make the decision.
Right.
Thumbs up from Ledoux.
Thank you, Brian. That, that covered everybody?
I think so. To give you an update as to where we're going next, we are planning for another joint Planning Commission-City Council for the evening of Wednesday, the 10th of March. Later this week, I plan to get you out the first five chapters of the new Unified Development Code. This will be covering the sections on zoning. You'll be, you'll be able to see the text of what Haciel Levine has been drafting on this. Now, we're not adopting anything. Again, this is being brought forward to make sure Planning Commission and Council thinks what we're doing is moving us in the right direction.
Is that a toolbox?
Yes.
Okay. Or tools?
Tools for the toolbox.
Okay.
Yeah, when we, when we met at the beginning, the very first meeting with the Joint Plan Commission-City Council meeting, it was real clear that you wanted to see things incrementally as ideas were being generated and drafts were being created. It's a lot to get to if you wait to the very end to see it all. So, this sort of incremental review and discussion really helps us, and in addition to what we're doing with the Plan Commission-City Council along the way, is meetings with city staff, city attorney, and others to, to sort of bounce ideas off and chew things up, so that we can put them in the best possible way for you to consider, so we can get direction from the city council and Plan Commission. So, these incremental discussions really help us keep things going.
Right. I mean, I personally, I don't want to get to June and say, oh, got to go back. We don't need that. I mean, we need to, everybody be involved in the process, and I appreciate that.
Absolutely. It helps us a lot.
Helps us too.
Yeah.
Helps us too. If there's no further discussion or business, I believe we're adjourned.
Okay, thank you. Thank you.
Thanks, everybody.